Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Gilbert Council meeting for January 11, 2022. Welcome to our first meeting of this new year. Happy New Year to everyone that's here this evening. I would like to start with our invocation and invite down Pastor Paul Earl from Living Word Gilbert. Hi, Pastor. Thanks for joining us.
All right. Let us pray together. Father, I thank you so much for us all being here tonight and for these council members. And I just pray for each and every one of them. I pray as they're serving their community here, I pray that their families and homes are blessed. Lord, I pray that they're protected, that they're healthy. Lord, that their relationships are strong. I pray that they are prosperous this year. I also pray for peace in this meeting, and I pray for wisdom for every person in this chambers right now. Lord, I also pray a hedge of protection around all of our firefighters and our police officers and those serving in the community that way. Lord, we thank you for protecting them, keeping them safe as your ministers out there doing your work. I pray a blessing over every person in this room. Thank you for this time tonight we have to serve our community better. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor. We appreciate you coming out this evening. Next, we'll have Vice Mayor Kaprowski lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We have one proclamation. Proclamation number one is for Speak Up, Stand Up, Save a Life. And we don't have anyone here this evening to accept this proclamation, but I wanted to take a second to read at least part of this because it's a very important program, especially to our teens. Whereas the Speak Up, Stand Up, Save a Life movement presents an ideal opportunity to help bridge the gap between young people, our local community, government, and law enforcement in a positive way. And whereas our schools are facing preventable suicides and tragedies that may include warning signs in person or online, but bystanders or friends remain silent among threats or cries for help. And whereas our young people can be empowered to report concerning posts or comments to school representatives or law enforcement, and adults can receive training to help spread the message it is okay to care enough to speak up, stand up, and save a life. Whereas more than 10,000 Arizona students from 169 public charter, private, and tribal schools have learned the message and created student-led impact projects in their schools and communities that have impacted over 500,000 youth in the state of Arizona, I, Bridget Peterson, Mayor of the Town of Gilbert, do hereby proclaim the month of January 22, 22 as Speak Up, Stand Up, Save a Life Month. Now therefore, be it resolved that Arizona schools, students, parents, educators, police departments, and community organizations are encouraged to coordinate a variety of awareness and prevention activities designed to make our communities safer and promote a healthy environment for all children and adolescents. One of my Jody London sisters, Gina Godby here, is responsible for this great organization. And I know that they have a lot of schools already signed up to be part of their session this year. And I apologize that I don't have the date for that, but if you are interested, please find them on social media or online because it's a great organization. Thank you. I always forget the roll call. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Bridget Peterson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Young Kaprowski.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Lauren Hendricks.
Present.
Councilmember Scott September.
Here.
Councilmember Kathy Tilke.
Here.
And Councilmember Amy Yentes.
Here.
The quorum is present.
Thank you, Chevelli. I apologize that I missed that. I think I'm so excited to get these meetings started that I just skip over the roll call every single time. Next, I'd like to have Vice Mayor Kaprowski join me, please. We have a certificate of appreciation for Young Kaprowski. As Mayor of the Town of Gilbert, it is my distinct pleasure to express sincere appreciation to Young Kaprowski for serving as Vice Mayor for the town in 2021. Vice Mayor Young Kaprowski carried out the duties of the office of Vice Mayor, honoring the public trust and representing the citizens of Gilbert with integrity and leadership. I have to say, the role of Vice Mayor is not something that people really think about that often. We choose a person every single year as Vice Mayor, but it really means more meetings, more events, definitely means more work, and there's no more pay. But where you're expected to be there to support me, to back me up, I appreciate that you have attended events with me and in my place this year, and I'd like to give you an opportunity to say something.
Thank you so much, Mayor Peterson. It's been an honor to serve this great community for the past little over a year. It's been so eye-opening and wonderful to work with Scouts, to work with the Chamber of Commerce, to assist with our ribbon cuttings for our businesses, and it's just been an honor, and thank you so much.
And like everything else, things are behind, so we have this lovely plant for you this evening for your new home, and there will be another gift forthcoming. Thank you.
Thank you.
and selection of Vice Mayor. Each year, like I mentioned before, the council during the first meeting of the year chooses a member of the council to serve as the Vice Mayor for the coming year. We are open to nominations at this time.
Mayor. Whoa. Whoa.
Wow.
I'd like to nominate Amy Yentes. Second.
Do we have any other nominations? We have to ask for other nominations before the second? Do we have any other nominations? Okay. Then I have a motion and a second, and we will need to vote, and the screen's not up. Yes.
Mayor, could we just clarify that was a nomination? Could we clarify?
Can we make a motion of that nomination, please?
I move that we accept the nomination and appoint Amy Yentes as Vice Mayor for a period of one year. Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Anderson. Was the second by Councilmember September?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are we supposed to hit that? Refresh.
Did we hit? Okay. Yes.
This one's broken. Mine's broken.
We can't take you anyplace.
Does everything have to be connected to the Internet?
We are a data-driven, technologically-driven community, so yes.
Okay, it says vote received here. There we go.
Councilmember September's vote is not showing, but I believe it's a yes vote?
It would be a yes.
So 7-0, passed.
Thank you for that help, Chevelli. We can't take Councilmember September anyplace, apparently. Just kidding, just kidding. Can we ask our ladies to swap seats at this point in time, please? So the next thing we like to do is always move the Vice Mayor right into their seat. And if you are having any trouble hearing Vice Mayor Yentes at this point, please let us know because, as Kelsey explained to us, this microphone is set up for Councilmember Kaprowski. And so just let us know, and then we'll adjust as necessary. We will now move into communications from citizens. Vice Mayor, I think you have some slips there if you would like to take a look and invite those people down to speak.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for the vote of confidence. I think, yeah, I think we have two citizens who have signed the form to speak. If there's anybody who has wishes to speak but who hasn't signed one of these forms, I think you can get them in the back, Mayor.
Vice Mayor, there are three.
Oh. I think I only have two.
Flip over that one.
Oh, okay. Very good. Thank you. Three slips to speak. The first citizen who signed up to speak is Jim Torgeson.
I think they were upside down because the back is what she reads to start.
Yeah. For, just for, I guess, consistency standpoint, I think we'll make this kind of a regular rhythm for the meeting, for this section, but as a reminder for anybody in the audience or speakers who have come to testify before the council, this portion of the agenda is an opportunity for you to address the town council. Any items that you are addressing haven't been agendized, so we're not able to respond to them as a council, as this speaker, I think, is well aware of. And we would just, of course, ask everybody to recognize, you know, rules of decorum, no clapping or cheering. And I think the timer said at three minutes. You have three minutes.
I'm Jim Torgeson. I promise not to clap for myself at this point. And as usual, even in college, I sat in the back of the room, so I'm sorry about that. Came directly from work, but I've just wanted to see, A, you become Vice Mayor because I think it's the right thing and should have happened before. And as many of you know, I have a soft spot for Amy. She's just great. I've known her a long, long time, and I want to congratulate her on a new baby. But what I want to really talk about is something that I wasn't allowed to speak about several months ago. I was asked by former councilmembers Taylor and Cook to look at a purchase agreement. I will not say the name of the company that got over on the town because, kudos to them, they stole from us, and they got away with it. Two of the members of this council voted to accept a bid, a non-competitive bid, for about a quarter million dollars, and they didn't know what they were voting on, but they were in a rush to do it. Several members, of course, of the past council did also. But somebody has to learn from their mistakes, and it appears that nobody does. That company produced fraudulent invoices. They conspired to cover up false purchase agreements. And kudos to our town manager for hiring a person to look at more of these purchases. And Jim Campion's probably done a great job. He even did what you failed to do and set forth a letter of debarment. I don't know if it's actually happened because it's not recorded anywhere, but I have seen the letter. It's not recorded anywhere. They will pay no price. They refunded $20,000, but the difference in materials that they took from the town was $140,000. So again, nobody thought about it. Certainly, they wanted to sweep it under the rug because nobody likes egg on their face, but nobody stood up and said, hey, I made a huge mistake. We're not going to do this again. The only person who said we made a mistake is our town manager, and he was right, and he did something about it. Nobody up here did anything about it. I would take that deal seven times a week and three times on Sunday because it was just a stupidly profitable thing for them to do, and they got away with it. They got away with it, and nobody up there held their feet to the fire. None of you held their feet to the fire. And it's really kind of pathetic because when people make mistakes, at least if you said, hey, I made a mistake, and this is what I'm doing to fix it, you can forgive them. But when people just move forward, like your money doesn't matter, this company's never going to pay a price, even though they fraudulently presented invoices, it's just not right. And I think all of you need to learn a lesson humility and figure out how you're going to make sure stuff like that doesn't happen again and maybe know what you're spending money on. But thank you.
Our next speaker, I think, marked their slip for a public hearing item, but I don't
So I'm here to talk about WW 1060, the Western Canal Corridor Analysis. Just a reminder, the third and fourth options are what us neighbors would like to happen. I had submitted another idea online where, like, option in eight and nine use a gravity-fed pipe through the streets. Well, I think eight was through the neighborhood, nine was through Gilbert down to the Cooper Station. It was ruled out because they're gravity-fed, and they go below the station, which is up here at the end. Well, my idea is to put a pump or something where it could feed the sewage out to the station, like a conveyor belt and a pump. You know, it shouldn't be crazy expensive, but I don't know. And then that's supposed to be decided upon in April, so I don't know what's going on from here on out. But also, last thing, I don't know why we're remodeling that building downtown. My first thought when I walked into the building was not, whoa, you know, this needs to be remodeled. It looks like garbage. It's pretty nice, actually. Because our city's on a budget, I think we feel the need to spend the budget or else next year the budget will be reduced, and we won't get what we feel like we need. I think this is the reason this might have occurred. I don't know. But I think departments should actually be rewarded for being thrifty and not lose money that they save out on for not wasting money spent. That's all. Thank you.
Our last speaker is Amy Keller.
We share a spelling of our name, so I congratulate you on your new position tonight. It's kind of rare to meet anyone with that spelling, so. But I'm Amy Keller, and I am the Communication Director for the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints in Gilbert. So I work with Public Affairs, and I'm just here tonight to invite you, Mayor Peterson, and members of the town council to a community event centered on the Constitution. As I was talking to Pastor Earl tonight, we were reflecting on past years with our Constitution Fair that we've had in Gilbert, and I know we haven't been able to have that recently due to COVID. But this is just a one-night, single event, and it's on February 4 at 7:00 p.m. at the church building right across the street from Williams Field High School. And nationally renowned speaker and author, Tad Colister, will be flying down to speak at this event. He has recently published a book called America's Choice: A Nation Under God or Without God. And so he'll be speaking tonight, that night, about the Constitution, and it should be an excellent program, and we would love to invite all of our elected officials to be there and to be recognized, and any members of our community also who would like to join us that night. I have some flyers here, and I will leave them for you for later. Thank you so much.
Mayor, I think that concludes our communications from citizens. Do you want to proceed with consent agenda? We have one item requested by councilmembers to be polled for consent, item 16. Are there any other from councilmembers? We can move to approve. I'm seeing none. Items two through 15 and items 17 through 21, is there a motion to approve? So moved.
A second.
A second.
Can everybody vote? I think we have to refresh. Motion carries unanimously. Item 16, Councilmember Toki.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I've asked Kelly for us to come up and just give a presentation, since this is part of the public process for system development fees, and she's going to explain to the public what we're doing at this point. Thank you, Kelly.
Mayor, council, thank you. Glad to be here tonight. This is part of the adoption process for our system development fees, for the water system development fees. As you remember, we're expanding the North Water Treatment Plant to have additional capacity, and that capacity will be used by new residents and businesses. So this is a way to help fund that infrastructure. If we did not fund it with system development fees, then it would be a burden, or we'd have to pay for that infrastructure with our ratepayers, our existing residents and businesses, even though they would not be the ones using the capacity. So this is our best way to connect the people who are using it with the people who will be paying for the infrastructure. This is part of a long process of adoption. We've had our notice of intent for the land use assumptions and infrastructure improvement plan. There's been a public hearing. Tonight, we can receive public input and then adoption by council at your discretion for this section, and then we move on to actually adopting the specific fees. So the land use assumptions basically say, we think Gilbert will continue to grow, which we feel is a pretty safe assumption. And the infrastructure that's included in the plan does follow state statute guidelines. It is for new growth, and it does not increase the level of service. The fees are increasing quite a bit. Infrastructure's getting more expensive, 36% here. The good news is, we have one of our fees that should be sunsetting and finishing as soon as we finish collecting money for those last expenses. So the net impact for our businesses and residents, so single-family resident, the net impact's about $313. And for a small commercial shell with a 2-inch meter, about $1,500 would be that difference there. We've met with a bunch of our stakeholders over the last while. I'm not aware of any feedback that they had that they'd asked to bring forward to council. So we have our decision tonight, and then the next steps would be to do a public hearing on the actual fees. In February, we would notice that tomorrow. Any questions from council?
Any comments or discussion amongst council? Entertain a motion?
Move approval.
I'll make the second.
Item passes unanimously.
Thank you, brand-new vice mayor. Great job. I think the rest of us forgot how we were doing our jobs, and you were just great. So thank you. Moving on to our public hearing portion of the agenda, we have two items on our public hearing, and we would-- I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and ask for a presentation for our first item. Do we have a staff presentation, Ashley? Yes, thank you. That would be zoning item Z20-02. I'm not going to read this whole description. It is the Heritage North Project at the corner of Gilbert and Juniper Roads in Gilbert. Open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor and council. While she gets my presentation, I will just hold on for a moment.
Well, there-- there you go.
Thank you. So this project, as the mayor mentioned, is Heritage North. It's Z2002, located at the southwest corner of Juniper and Gilbert Road. You can see it outlined here in red. Just as some background, this is an about 12-acre parcel, or 9.9 net acres. Back in 2019, the town entered into a development agreement with the applicant in order to develop this site. And then in March of 2020, the applicant submitted five total applications to the Development Services Department, one of those being the rezone that you're hearing tonight. There are two use permits, as well as a design review application and an administrative use permit. I'll walk us through a little bit of what that process looks like, just for some understanding. But this project has been going on for about two years, so we're excited to be here tonight for this first application. In terms of the process, the first application that I mentioned is the rezoning and PAD. That application first went to our redevelopment commission for consideration, followed by that, it went to our planning commission for consideration, and of course, tonight, it is before town council for a final determination. If this is a successful application tonight, we will move on to hearings for the use permits. There are two use permits, one for ground-floor residential in the Heritage Village Center zoning district, and a second to allow a hotel in that same zoning district. So that would go to the redevelopment commission for a recommendation to planning commission, and then planning commission would make a final determination on those two applications. After that, the redevelopment commission would hear the design review, and then the administrative use permit for parking would be reviewed by staff. So the request tonight is for a planned area development. The existing zoning on-site is Heritage Village Center already. It's part of an existing PAD, so this request would remove the site from the existing La Vida Serena PAD and establish a new PAD to allow for some alternate development standard deviations. With the site, there are nine total, eight, nine total buildings. At the north end of the site, on the northwest corner of the subject site, is Building 1. That's our multifamily building. Building 2, at the hard corner of Juniper and Gilbert Road, is a hotel building. Building 3 at the center is a mixed-use building that consists of ground-floor retail. Above would be office. Building 4 is just right in proximity to the parking garage, the south parking garage. Buildings 5 and 6 are proposed as restaurant and retail buildings at the center of the site. Building 7, at the very south end, is a Class A office building with some ground-floor retail. Building 8 is the south parking garage, and then Building 9, right at the center of the site, near the commons open space, is a kiosk. It's important to note with this development, there are some public amenities that would be provided. That's development of the Paseo through the site, as well as some improvements to the western power line trail. So just for some context, the PAD process is a tool to modify development regulations in order to achieve unique development. So as we're reviewing the deviation requests of the applicant tonight, you know, we need to keep in mind that they're allowed when we're creating a unique and outstanding development. So the applicant is requesting three deviations, along with establishment of a development plan. The deviations specifically that they're requesting are to modify setbacks, to reduce the transparency required in HVC, as well as modifying building heights. So first, talking about the setbacks. They are seeking to reduce setbacks adjacent to residential. On the westernmost portion of the site, they would be required to provide a 20-foot setback adjacent to the residential zoning district. They are proposing a reduction to 0 feet, but I will note that the closest that building comes to the property line is 3 feet to the property line, but 72 feet to the actual residential units that are part of the Arborwalk development across Ash Street. In terms of transparency, the Heritage Village Center zoning district requires that 75% of the ground floor be transparent in order to activate that street frontage, create those active pedestrian spaces. But our zoning code doesn't differentiate between residential and non-residential uses, and so for the hotel building and for the residential building, as well as Building 8, the parking garage, they are seeking a reduction of that transparency requirement from 75% to 50%. In terms of the building heights, this is probably one of the most significant deviation requests, I guess is how I would characterize it. HVC permits a maximum height of 55 feet in four stories. HVC also has minimum height requirements. Those minimum height requirements are 35 feet in two stories. So just for some context of what that looks like in the Heritage District, the University Building is just at about 62, 63 feet. Co-Lab is 64 feet. And then most similar to what you'll see as part of this request tonight is the Vaughn Parking Garage. To the top of that clock tower is 78 feet, just to provide some context of what these heights actually look like. So the specific deviations, Buildings 1, 2, 7, and 8 are all requesting increases to the maximum building heights, and I'll walk through these buildings individually. And then Buildings 3, 4, 5, 6, and 9 are all requesting reductions in the minimum building heights. In some cases, they're looking for single-story. Building 3 is still doing two stories, but it doesn't meet the 35 feet. So walking through the site, the multifamily, here, they're requesting, as I mentioned, an increase in height, as well as an increase in stories. The development agreement that was approved as part of this site allowed for, or required, a minimum of 250 residential dwelling units. The applicant in this case is meeting that requirement, providing 288 dwelling units. And one of the things that's important to talk through is, as we've worked with the applicant on this particular site, we've asked them to make some site modifications, and one of those included shifting the hotel from its initial location up to the hard corner of Gilbert and Juniper. And that shift required them to make some modifications to the residential portion of the site in order to meet that minimum requirement for dwelling units in the development agreement. And in doing so, what they ended up doing was relocating some of the amenities to the roof, which then necessitated a higher height for the elevator building, as well as an amenity building on the roof. And so that's really where that increased height comes from. So if you look at the map, the very center portion of, that's colored in gray, is the amenity building. That would be a height of 78 feet 10 inches. And then there's also just some architectural features that require some additional height. The ridge you can see is also that gray color at the south end of the building and the east side of the building. Staff has worked pretty closely with the applicant to nail down specifically where those additional heights would be permitted, just to ensure that we're not allowing the 78 feet for the entire building, that they are limited to a 5% floor area of that. So looking at the elevations, you can see here, it's at the center of the screen, towards the top, is the 78-foot-tall portion of the building. And then the applicant has also provided a perspective that shows what the view angle is if you're looking towards the building. And so by the way that they've located it at the center of the building, I think it really helps to minimize the impact of the increased height. In terms of hotel building, number two, the request there is to increase the height and the stories as well. Per the development agreement, they were required to provide a 75,000-square-foot building or 150 rooms. So they are meeting that requirement with an 80,000-square-foot building. They are proposing 49 feet to the top of the finished floor of the fifth story. So they're requesting an increase from four stories to five stories. And then to the top of the amenity roof and the mechanical screen, there would be a request for an increase in height up to a total of 71 feet 8 inches. But again, here, you can see the way that they've staggered that height, so that it's right up against Gilbert Road and right up against Juniper. It isn't that maximum height. So this is what that would look like. Moving on to mixed-use building number three. As I mentioned, this one is proposed at two stories. They are proposing a height of 30 feet. The zoning district requires 35 feet, but I will note the top of the parapet is 37 feet, so it is pretty consistent with what we would actually expect. And this is what that building would look like. Retail building number four is located just right adjacent to the south parking garage. Here, they're requesting a decrease in the height and the stories. This is a one-story building intended to serve as kind of small incubator retail spaces. It is proposed at 26 feet. And then retail buildings 5 and 6 are requesting similar deviations of just being one story, a height of 20 feet. And then those buildings would look like this. Office building number seven, here, they're requesting an increase in the height as well. The development agreement requires 100,000 square feet of office space. With this building, they're providing 145,000 square feet of office space, as well as 9,200 square feet of retail on the ground floor. What's important to note about this building is, again, the heights are staggered. So along Gilbert Road, the building is only 30 feet in height before it steps up to 70 feet. And then along the north edge of the building, where that tan color is, it is proposed at 58 feet. And then right in the center, where you see the gray, that's proposed at 79 feet. So again, not right up against the edge of the building to kind of help minimize the impact. And this is what that building would look like. You can see there's a lot of movement in it, which I think really helps break up that large massing. The parking garage is requesting just a very small increase in the maximum height. This parking garage would provide 763 spaces. It is a total of five stories. The development agreement requires a parking garage that is five stories. And the small portions of the site that are in gray on the north and the east, those are the areas where it would be above the maximum height of the zoning district, but that's by 2 1/2 feet. And so that building would look like this. Through this process, we've heard feedback from the planning commission, redevelopment commission, and neighbors. Those concerns focused primarily around parking, traffic. There was some comments about the street names on the site, which the applicant has agreed to modify some of those street names, just to avoid some confusion with similarly-named streets within the district. But that isn't reflected on the plan, so I wanted to just put that onto the record. I thought it would be important to talk a little bit about parking, since that was such an important topic, as this was evaluated by our planning commission and redevelopment commission, and it's one of the applications that has been in review by staff. The land development code does allow for a reduction in parking based on shared uses, and so the applicant has made that request. If this site were developed in conformance with the requirements of the land development code, meaning all of the minimum parking for each use, they would be required to provide just over 1,500 parking spaces, and what they have provided is 1,305. So that's a reduction of about 14%. If we were to ask them to strictly meet the land development code, they would be required to provide all of the parking that they're providing, but then reduce the square footage of buildings on-site by 54,000 square feet. So I wanted to just address that for a moment. With their parking study, I thought it important to also note that the multifamily parks in the residential garage. There's no reduction proposed for the residential parking. Where they have proposed a reduction in parking is for the non-residential uses, and that was reduced based on shared trips, which was mirrored after the traffic study. The traffic study allowed for an assumption of a 10% capture, meaning people are taking shared trips. And so this modeled that, or mirrored that. And then we further refined it based on the Urban Land Institute's time-of-day occupancy rates. So, you know, for example, the office has a peak occupancy that's different from restaurant users' peak occupancy. In addition to the applicant's traffic study that used that methodology, the town engaged Walker Consultants to also review and analyze the parking on-site. They utilized some industry standard ratios, as well as those adjustments that I had talked about, and came up with a total number of required spaces of 1,312. So one of our proposals is that during peak conditions, the applicant would transition to a valet parking model to accommodate that additional parking demand, because they're just shy of what's being provided on-site. So Walker found 1,312, and they're providing 1,305 parking spaces, so they're pretty close. The applicant has indicated they won't charge for parking. This is a condition of the zoning ordinance. And finally, Planning Commission did recommend approval of this item last week at their hearing on a vote of 6 to 1, and then the redevelopment also, the redevelopment commission also recommended approval of this item at their hearing in December. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. The applicant is here as well tonight and has a presentation as well, if you'd like.
Thank you, Ashley. Any comments, questions for Ashley at this point in time, or we can have the applicant come right up? Seeing none, I'll ask Mr. Charles Hultmantel to come up to the podium.
Thank you. Good evening, Charles Hultmantel, for the record. I want to start by saying thank you. We're really proud and excited to be here. As Ashley mentioned, it's been a long process. We were ready to submit this project literally on the eve of COVID, and that was a pretty big hit for-- And that was a pretty big hit for us at first. If you'd asked me on that day, where would we be here? I don't know. This is the story I would tell. But it turned out, in a pretty interesting way, to have been a good thing. And one of the things I'm proud of is the image that you see, the product that we have for you. And I was ready to spend the next hour or so telling you about it. But one of the great things is, I'm so proud of how well we've worked with your staff. And Ashley did such an incredible job. I don't want to repeat all the things that she would say, so I'm going to skip through a lot of these slides. But I do want to thank Ashley and all of your staff, your economic development staff, your planning staff. I think we had the unique opportunity with COVID. Again, I'm not sure we saw it that way in the early days, to find a way to work through every issue on an incredibly complex project. This has the hotel, the office. But I think one of the things that I really want to talk about is not just the buildings that people are going to use, but all the space that Gilbert gets the advantage of because of all this hard work. It really isn't the buildings. It's not just the office building, not just the hotel. But you look at the commons, you look at the streets, you look at the streetscape. And I kind of want to spend a few minutes talking about that and some of the opportunities that we found. And then I'm happy to answer any questions you want. I've got a long presentation. I can go back and answer any of the details you want. But I think the thing that makes us most proud, in addition to working with the town staff, is the sense of space. And some of these requests are pretty particular, and we've worked hard, as you've seen, the space in the right places, and you saw the diagrams. I'm not going to go over that again, but I want you to look at what that means in real life. What it means is context. What it means is a sense of scale and a sense of place. What it means is, even if you're not on the inside of those buildings, we think that this project is going to feel great for generations to come. And we're really proud that we get to be part of that and part of the fabric. And it's not just us, it's all the work that your town staff did, and frankly, the things that you envisioned that brought us here in the first place to make those things happen and to carry on that character of downtown Gilbert. And I hope when you see these images, those are some of the things you think about. The lighting, the hardscaping, the amount of space between the buildings, the trees. And frankly, for all the time we've spent on parking, you see very little of it. Really, what you see is where the people will interact. One of the fortunate things that happened in this case was, we found out early on that there was a Burger King, and the Burger King had a height restriction that nobody knew about. And so we had to work to get rid of the Burger King. Their expression about doing it your way didn't quite work for us, so we ended up acquiring the Burger King, and this is what it looks like today. Again, this is what we're trying to build with your approval here tonight. I think and hope that you'll agree that it's a huge departure from what was there. I'm going to skip over most of these slides. Ashley's done such a phenomenal job covering them, and I'm going to go. The Paseo is something we spent a lot of time with your town on. Again, that public space really becomes important. And there were just lots and lots of conversations that were tough to have during COVID, but we had them, and I think we ended up with so many different possibilities, but ultimately a version that really worked for everyone and, I think, provides, again, for generations to come, a better sense of connectivity throughout the entire downtown, not just our project. And we're really proud that what we're doing extends into other parts of the wonderful downtown that I think we've all grown to love. I'm going to show you a few more images, and then I'm going to take questions, if you'd like, and happy to talk about details about any of this you want.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Hughmantle? Comments, questions? Councilmember Anderson?
Just a couple of questions. The first one has to do with the signage, the entryway signage into the Heritage District. I know that we're putting a sign on the rooftop of the hotel, which I'm not real supportive of rooftop signs in the first place, but I think this one seems to work. But I'm interested in whether or not there's been any discussion about any ground-level either signage or artwork, something that can announce arrival into the Heritage District, that you've taken a look at that.
The answer is yes to all the things you've asked. We have, in addition to the rooftop signage, and I was nervous about what you might say for your vote on the COVID amendment, so true to your word, you continue to be concerned about that. We have worked hard with your staff to provide it in the right spot, in the right scale, and we hope that works. But we'll continue to work with your staff on that and also ground-level signage. One of the things that your town staff has really worked closely with us on is not only the location of the Paseo, but the ease of people getting through the Paseo. That's true. As you look through the buildings and you see we have signage and light and other things, that lighting, we think, has an art component to it. Street furniture has an art component to it. We'll have wayfinding signage, and we'll also work with the town on signage on the ground level to, again, get rid of the Burger King sign and instead put a sense of arrival signage in for the Heritage District.
Right. And that's why I say artwork could be that sign, something as simple as that, but that would be exciting to show as an entryway into the district, I think.
Well, certainly with your staff.
The other question was, has SRP totally ruled out any possibility of water in the Western Canal? I know it's referred to on the plans as the Western Powerline Trail, but there was a canal there at one time.
I am 100% certain that SRP does not want me answering for them.
And they haven't...
See, they're delivering more than power. I guess we'll see.
Yeah, yeah. But they haven't explored that at all with them, of keeping water in that canal.
I have not.
Running through there, okay. Thank you.
You always ask the tough questions, Councilmember Anderson. Comments, questions from this end?
Sure, Mayor. I think it's a really good-looking development. I want to thank the applicant for working so closely and for so long with the town of Gilbert, with staff. And I know that, I want to thank staff also, planning staff, economic development was involved, there are probably other departments. But I'm very proud of staff for what this has become versus what we... The iterations that it's gone through over time, the different designs that we've seen, I think it's really something special. And I know it was a lot of work to get the right scale and size and to make sure the Paseo traversed completely through from north to south. I know there was a lot of work that went into that, and so I just want to acknowledge all that work, not only from staff but from the applicant. Thank you.
I would also point out that the councils weighed in from time to time on things like the Paseo, and they helped us find the right place in the right way. And we appreciate you guys being so personally involved in making it the great project that we think it is today.
Yes, Councilmember Tulkey.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember September stole all of my thunder on that one, so I'm just going to say ditto and thank you for doing that. No, I appreciate that you are thanking the staff and the applicant. It's come a long way from those first drawings, and I know it has been a lot of hard work and a difficult time. And I appreciate the product that's coming forward. I agree with Councilmember Anderson that that sense of arrival is really important, and I know that's part of that hotel corner, but looking forward to that and some of the other details that come forward. I just mentioned that Paseo was very, very important to us, and, you know, at first it didn't quite happen. And then when I saw the first drawing, because it was just a black and white drawing, I just saw a tunnel, and I thought, what the heck is that? So thank you for the beautiful color drawings so that I can visualize it and see it. But the staff and the applicant have worked so hard on this project. It's something we're going to, as you mentioned, be proud of for generations to come. So I just didn't want you to leave before we had the opportunity to say that.
I appreciate that.
Any other comments?
Just one more follow-up. So I just, I know I'm going to leave out a department, but I'm sure traffic was involved. I want to thank legal, I know they were involved. Town manager's office was involved. And this is, I believe this is going to be not just the north anchor for the Heritage District for years to come, it's going to be an economic anchor, it's going to be a jobs anchor. So I'll stop at that.
Thank you. If you think of other departments, just chime in. I don't know, you might have missed one or two, but...
Fire and refuse were also involved.
Right, thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Hendricks, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Kaprowski? Oh, that's going to be harder to say, yes. Charles, thank you. I met with all of you right after becoming mayor, I think it was. And I know the effort that has been put into this project, and I appreciated the time and the constructive criticism I may have offered at that first meeting. And I'm really glad that we were able to sit down at the table and have that conversation. I think because of all of the discussions that we've all had and all of the amazing staff that Councilmember September just mentioned, you have come out with just an amazing product. And I am so excited to see it come to fruition. And thank you for making that corner of Gilbert and Juniper that hotel piece, because I think it really is the entryway to our Heritage District. And for being creative with our traffic folks and looking at the median down Gilbert Road with the tree-lined medians so that we can offset those driveways across the street. I think that there's been a lot of creativity that's gone into this discussion, and I thank you all for that.
Mayor, we would not have this project in this way without you. We appreciate your hands-on approach. And people often say it's great to have a seat at the table. It's a little different in this case, because I remember distinctly going to the meeting, and I remember going upstairs and thinking, wow, I haven't walked upstairs in a long time, because it was the first meeting we attended. It's sort of an odd time in the world where people were not meeting. And that meeting, people sitting at the table, talking about their ideas, talking about their hopes and dreams, made us rethink it in a way that frankly Zoom doesn't make happen. And the staff all came in, and you came in, and I think you invigorated us and got us excited, and we came back with a better project. So thank you. I think every one of you has been personally involved. The Councilman September even came to the Planning Commission hearing. I mean, it's incredible how involved you've all been, and we really do think we have a better project because of it. So thank you.
Thank you. I think that we really take ownership of projects like this in the town and just like our staff does. And again, they have spent so many hours on this project, and thank you to all of them for everything that they've done and to all of you. Appreciate it.
I'm going to step away before anybody changes their mind.
Thank you, Charles. I appreciate it. I will go ahead and bring the discussion back to the dais and close the public hearing. Any comments, or would anyone like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. Make sure I say this right, to accept, or do I say approve zoning Z20-02?
So I have a motion by Councilmember Tulkey and a second by Councilmember Kaprowski. Motion passes 7-0. Congratulations, everyone. Thank you. We will move on to our only other item on our public hearing agenda, which is property acquisition. Does anyone need a presentation on this? Or I will open the public hearing. Does anyone need a presentation on this? Or would someone like to offer a motion? Not until we have discussion. If anybody wants to discuss it, then. Any comment, discussion, anything? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Motion?
Move of approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Anderson, seconded by Councilmember Tulkey. Please vote. Oh, excuse me, was it? Sorry. I got it wrong. Perfect. We'll move into administrative items. We have council administration consider acceptance of the Shade and Streetscape Master Plan and declare it a public document. Are we having a presentation on this item? Seeing none? Nobody's jumping up to run to the podium, so I'm thinking that we are not having a presentation. Do we, would anyone like to please make a motion to accept the Shade and Streetscape Master Plan since Councilmember Jared Taylor is no longer here? Were you thinking the same thing? I will go ahead and make a motion on his behalf. How's that?
Good idea.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion by Mayor Peterson, seconded by Councilmember Tulkey. Please vote. Oh, I forgot to refresh. Some things just never leave your brain when you have those situations. It was always a talk about shade. Motion passes 7-0. Moving on to boards, commissions, and committees. I don't know if anyone has any reports from council liaisons on any of your boards, commissions, committees? Seeing none, we're still kind of early in the year, so I will go to communications. Report from the town manager on current events.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'll just echo the congratulations for the project that you recently approved, the Heritage North Project. That was a multi-year effort, and I think it felt like every employee in the organization got involved at some point. But in particular, we'd like to recognize the involvement of Dan Henderson, Kyle Mures, John Baird and Legal, Ashley McDonald, of course, Amanda Elliott, Sydney Bethel, as well as Mary Goodman. They all spent a tremendous amount of time on this project, as did many members of our traffic engineering and engineering department in general. I also would like to thank all of you for your vision and leadership on this. This is truly going to be another incredible, and I think you said it, Councilmember September, not just to the Heritage District but to the town in general. It's just an amazing addition to this community, and I can't wait to cut the ribbon on it. I also attended our graduation for our fire academy graduates. Thirteen of them graduated on December 23rd. That was a great Christmas present for them and their loved ones and their families, and I want to thank all the training officers, all the fire personnel, all the fire leadership who invested their time in those new fire personnel in Gilbert and those young recruits who we look forward to their contributions to our community. And then also got word that Mayor Peterson was placed on the National League of Cities Information Technology and Communications Committee, so congratulations for that. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Patrick. Thank you for that announcement, too. Report from council on current events. Oh, I don't see any. Okay. Report from the mayor on current events. Well, I have a few. Tomorrow is Patrick Bander's birthday. And I know a lot of us will be with you tomorrow morning at the governor's breakfast, but I wanted to mention it this evening. We also have a community food drive, and I'll probably announce this now at every meeting that we're at. We have a community food drive coming up on February 25th and 26th. It will be at many of our local churches. We'll be providing a list as we get closer to that date. And we are very close to choosing a new aide for me. And once we have chosen that aide and we get them on board, I'd like to do a, put out an offer for a one-on-one with each of us individually with my new aide to maybe meet and discuss anybody's goals, priorities for the year, and have in mind anything that you might want as a topic for our financial retreat coming up in early March. And that's all I have this evening, so I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting, and we will reconvene in our executive session. Thank you.